Good evening, everybody. I'm bringing this meeting, the special time meeting to order, and I would like to start the meeting.
This is a web-based virtual public hearing. So we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded both audio and video. Lisa Daniel, the Executive Administrative Assistant, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT Director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video audio is posted to the Web Town website. Most people attending this meeting will be muted. The town council members and staff will not be muted. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question. Individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and give their home address. Please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature for the meeting administrators to know that you raised your hand to speak. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing and only after being recognized. If a member of the public speaks outside of the public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrator or the town council chair. Mr. Wynn?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to do is go over some conversation with Paul Jessel in the question of having a question on a ballot in November. We received a reply from the Secretary of State, and what transpired with that was they gave us two statutes of the state of Connecticut to help us decide whether we could have a question on that, and suggested that we give this to our town attorneys for review and an opinion. Paul just got this on Friday afternoon, and he worked pretty much all day on this, trying to gather as much information as he can or could, and he just needs a little bit more time. So the question about a question on the ballot in November about the form of government is not going to be answered tonight. The town council is very interested in this, but I don't think we should be making a decision or even talking about this until we have a legal document saying that we can or we cannot. And so we're not even going to respond to that this evening. I have two testimonial statements, one from Alex Corvath and the other one from Sean Butterley, and I will put, I'm going to place that in the record. Next, I would like to invite Chairman Rob Kane from the Charter Commission to make a statement. Chairman Kane, please. Did he hear me?
How about now? Am I unmuted now?
Okay, okay, go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, there's some members of the Charter Revision Commission here as well. I want to thank you for holding this public hearing on our report that we filed with the town clerk recently. As you know, we're in the step of the process where your committee holds a hearing on our draft report. As you also know, you can accept all of our changes, which of course is our hope, but you can reject them in whole or in part. So we're at the part where we want to work with you and with the general public on our report. Let me just give you a brief history, if I may, and I'll try to be brief as I can. We began this process in June of last year, so it's been about a year that we've been in this undertaking. We held like a meeting over the summer, not too much. We knew vacations took place and people were out of school. But back in the fall, we came back in the months of September, through the holidays, we had two meetings a month, and continued our effort in January, February, March with two meetings a month until the pandemic occurred and we had our final meeting like this online. We started with an overview of the charter. We took a look in general in a 10,000-foot view, and members gave opinions on different items within that overview. The next thing we did was look at a lot of outdated language, gender-neutral language that needs to be updated. If you go through the line version of the charter, you'll see a lot of changes to update for the 21st century, as well as monetary figures, to be honest with you. There were a lot of monetary figures that were outdated. The next thing we did was have each and every department head attend our meetings and speak to the committee. And each one of them went through their department and how their department was affected by the charter, or how their department affects the charter. And we sat through each and every, we had each and every one of them. We also received information from CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They were very helpful. They provided us a research guide, which all of the members of the committee were given, on charter revision policies and procedures. Part of that research guide included an adoption and revision process, local government structures, and general information that was helpful for all the members. We also received a spreadsheet from CCM on salaries of elected officials, for example, mayor, council form of government, council manager form of government, first selectman, and that, and what have you. We took all of that information into consideration and have the report draft in front of you now. I believe it was a fair, open, transparent process. All our meetings were held publicly. All our meetings were on the town website. They were all noticed in local news publications. We also had it on the, as I said, on the website. We allowed public participation at each and every meeting, and we held two public hearings. So I believe it was a true transparent process that the public had an opportunity to weigh in. All of our members took their responsibility incredibly seriously. We put incredible effort, and we had great legal advice from Attorney Pelosi, who was with us hand-in-hand the whole way. I believe that's a good overview of our job and what we've done, and I'll certainly open it up to any questions that you or the public may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now I'm going to open up any statements or questions to the public. If you'd like to speak, just click on the hand on your screen, and we will open your mics. I have no one here right now. We'll wait, we'll wait a minute or so. No one, no one is showing. Pardon me? Baker, live? Ms. Kamara?
Yes, Catherine Kamara, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I do have a comment. Well, first of all, can you tell me what those statute numbers were that are being looked at?
No, I don't have them. I talked to Paul today. I did not ask.
I'm sorry, you're cutting out what?
Paul Catherine, I can help here in the morning, and I will get those statutes for you from Paul Jessel.
Okay. Another question, I do have another comment, but I do want to ask something. I know if I was to go to the municipal center tomorrow, I would have to wear a mask to go into the municipal center. And last night you held a meeting, and tonight you're holding a meeting, and no one's wearing masks. I don't understand that. Shouldn't you all be wearing masks?
No, the rule is six feet away. We are six feet away. I'd like you to point out and keep it on the subject at hand, please. We are six feet away.
I just want to know, if I go to the municipal center tomorrow, I don't have to wear a mask, I just have to stay six feet away? Is that right?
Oh, that's not right.
Pardon me?
You have to wear a mask.
Okay.
People are walking around in the hallways. You have no idea or you have no ability to guarantee that you're going to be six feet away from anybody in a building that people are going in and out of rooms. Here, we're sitting stable, and we're not going to be getting anywhere closer than six feet that we are.
Okay, so I guess you guys are all COVID-free then? Okay. So the other thing I just wanted to say was, I know that John Donahue, I think his name is, had commented that no one was interested about the change of form of government, and I just want to say that I was very interested in that from the beginning, and I attended all but two meetings. And the meeting for February 11th on the agenda, I didn't recognize that to be a meeting that was going to be talked about, because it said town government, town manager qualifications. I thought it had something to do with the town manager. It wasn't explained at the meeting before that that's when it was going to be brought up, and I waited like till February for that to happen. So I just want to say that when it was said at a meeting that no one had any interest, number one, that wasn't true. Number two, if I had recognized that would have been on there, I probably would have talked to some people who were the people that were interested, and probably you would have had more people there on February 11th. However, to get, at the same meeting when he said that, the town, I'm sorry, the Charter Commission Attorney Pelosi had said that the petitioner's signature count into the record as if people were there. So to say that no one was interested, but to get 173 people to sign something, I just wanted on the record, yes, those people, that petition counted as people having an interest in this. And I found it somewhat offensive, after the attorney had said that, to then, again, for someone to say, well, nobody was interested, and they were. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? John, John Donahue?
John Donahue.
Oh, John Donahue.
Thank you. Just to answer that statement, we voted on February 11th to either move to change our present form of government or keep our former present government. And the motion on the floor was, by the majority, to keep the town manager and the town council. We also had one Democrat come across and vote with us, so that made us six. And I never said that statement that she said. I said why I wanted town council and town manager, because I had worked as a board of Waldem and Waterbury for 12 years under a mayor. I lived in Woodbury under a selectman, and I've been living here in Watertown for the last six years under town council, town manager. And having seen all three work, I thought Watertown was set up the best. And I thought the town manager, town council, had degrees in managing city towns and cities. So that was my purpose. I've never said no one was interested. Of course, everyone's interested in that. We're a committee of nine, we're a Charter Revision Commission. We welcome the people that the last 12 months came down to speak, and we'd like to ask questions to them, and for that, I just wanted to go on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anybody else? Cheryl Albino, you are on the mic.
Hi, everybody. This is Cheryl Albino, and I live at 346 Georgetown Drive in Watertown. I'm just here to say a couple things. First, I'd like to state that I am in favor of placing the mayoral versus town manager question on the ballot. I feel it's in the Watertown taxpayers' best interest to be able to vote every two years for a candidate. I also feel that the terms for town board should follow a two-year term as well. Most of you know that I was on the Board of Ed previously, so I just thought I would put that out there. And one other thing I'd like to mention is, there are some systemic injustices with local and federal governments, where a select few are privileged and receive special requests, supported via letter by certain town officials, and they're granted opportunities that others in our town don't receive. And these are being waived for expired permits and for the standard bonds that our town normally requires for the development of subdivisions. We're being called upon at this time to take a look in the mirror and make changes to create a safer, more equitable, and better world, where everyone is treated with respect, dignity, and equality. And I really ask that this town and the commissions take time to reevaluate and adjust accordingly. Being brave means taking action, because it's the right thing to do, and being an upstander, even when it may prompt criticism from some. We are, we as residents of Watertown must be brave and take a stand for what is right, and ask our boards to take action when the situation demands it, to initiate, much needed change, and an evaluation and discussion that will bring forth positive change in our town. Tolerance and acceptance that this is how things have been done is a thing of the past in this whole world, not just in our town, but in the world right now. We need to leave our community better than we have found it, and we are all being called upon to implement changes now. Like I said, you know, I was on the board, and I feel that, of the Board of Ed, and I feel that they were operating with equality, transparency, fairness, and integrity. And if you guys are all doing that and operating in this manner, all the other boards, residents, thank you. But if you know changes need to be implemented, please don't remain silent. Residents will hold boards accountable going forward. During this unprecedented time, residents request and expect that all of our boards and commissions make extra efforts to operate with the utmost integrity, fairness, transparency, and equality for all. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Albino.
I have one gentleman, Jeffrey DeSmeris. I just have to get him connected.
Albino.
I'm on here.
Jeffrey, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to just point out on the referendum discussion in the last meeting that we had with the Charter Commission, I was trying to make a point that this is sort of what we were discussing earlier. Kamara brought this up, and this was also part of it earlier as well. We're talking about having the opportunity for the people to make this decision. We only have the opportunity for the Charter Commission every 10 years. And so when a point like this needs to be addressed, this is the time and the environment to do it. As a member of the commission, this is my opinion, so you can take it easy, my personal opinion, but I believe it's shared by a number of people. I don't believe that we spent anywhere near enough time or focused enough attention on this question. And I'm not, I'm not sitting here advocating for one form over the other in this particular thing. I do have a preference, but that's not even what I believe is the essential question. I think the question is that we should have it left to the voters to decide. The question I guess I have, though, is that if we're, I guess Attorney Jessel's looking into this, I got on this a few minutes late, so I apologize. Do we know if we find this out, is there going to be a follow-up meeting regarding, you know, that question, a referendum? It's going to be brought up in the next, at the next town council meeting, or is there going to be another special meeting, or?
Yeah, well, this is, I expect a written letter from Attorney Jessel by the end of next week. We have a meeting in July 20th. In between that time, I'm expecting to have a joint meeting with the commission about the whole, about the whole document, including whether we can have a letter or a question on the ballot in November.
Okay, do we know, do we know who he's consulting? I mean, what is the authority on this question?
Well, the authority, I mean, he's talking to the people they've had before.
I'm sorry you went out there, Tom. I apologize. I didn't hear what you said.
Right. He's talking to different attorneys in the state. He's talking to different executives in different towns and cities, and finding out what they've done or have not done in this kind of question. Like I said, I don't know if you heard me or you were there when I started the meeting, is that he just got this question, or got this answer from the attorney, from the Secretary of State office, giving him these two, these two state statutes, and he worked on it a little bit Friday, late Friday, and he worked on it a lot today. This is a question that I do not want, I don't think anybody wants him to get wrong, and I think we shouldn't even be discussing whether it's going to go on this, the ballot in November, until we know we legally can. And that's where I will wait for him. We will have a joint meeting. It will be discussed, and people will be able to discuss it at the town meeting on July 20th, and it will be, we will have a lot of transparency here. We're not going to be hiding anything. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Chairman? However, Mr. Butterley had expressed today that he wanted to speak. If I open up his mic and he's available, let him in.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Butterley? Okay. He's lost, like I was.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, and the Charter Revision Commission virtually connected at this hearing, and all the folks at Watertown watching in are listening in. My name is Sean Butterley of 59 Litchfield Road, Watertown. As I outlined in the attached memo to the town council on June 1st, Rich Ravelletta and I have been spearheading a mayoral petition drive since late February, and we suspended that drive due to the coronavirus. We easily collected 173 signatures requesting that we have a manager versus mayor referendum on November 3rd as part of the presidential ballot. We respectfully request you vote to do just that and table the Kane-majority Charter Revision Report until November 4th, 2020. Please do not hire a permanent town manager until after the people speak on November 3rd. We do not want a liability of a large contract payoff if we change to mayor. I also close as part of my testimony, Mr. Chairman, and I know I said to the town clerk today, or to the town manager's office, a copy of the paid ad that appeared in the June 11 Town Times, and we thought, we took that picture June 6th, both as a tribute to those brave people that freed Europe on that great invasion, many of whom for this town, like the Gilbert Twins. And I also want to tell you that we only had six or seven people on those stairs of the new town hall, but if you can appreciate how much 173 is, 173 is like having those 27 chairs filled, stairs filled, seven times. We were hoping to pack a real meeting tonight. We were hoping to come to Watertown High, as this town has able to do for 240 years. And we actually cut a cake at our Davales Rally, March 10th. Jeff DeSmeris is there with us, Mr. Ravelletta, and we sang "Happy Birthday" to Watertown for its 240th birthday. Sadly, tonight, for the first time in 240 years, we cannot do the New England democratic practice of pack the local hall due to the virus. However, you have 173 names and addresses of real people in our town, and in fairness, you should treat it as we're all there, because we did our best, and then we shut it down, as we all had to because of the virus. And I wanted to just tell you, I took a few quick moments, I didn't study this completely, but yesterday I had a few minutes, and I looked at some towns like Sunnyton that have 169,000, and Cheshire for their town manager job. If we had a mayor that was paying in the range of a Wilken or Noghtuck mayor, $85,000 or $90,000, we could also pay town councilmen $2,000 per term. So as I said to Mr. Wynn today at Chubba's, at the end of your term, you could take your wife or your kids up to Main for a little vacation for a weekend or whatever, as a little point of saying, hey, thank you. Thanks, John Ramsey, thanks, Anthony DeBona, thanks, Ms. Rosa, and thank you, Raz, I don't see you there, Louis Raz, but thank you. This is a way of saying, and plus, you get with that, with that little bit of pay, some responsibility and some accountability. So I think we could spend $110,000 and still be under what town managers get in this state. And then we'd also have democracy. Now, I've proposed a compromise tonight that I'd like to have you guys think of in light of what you said about Attorney Jessel. Politics is the art of compromise. And ladies and gentlemen, we are looking at it as mayoral advocates, I talked to Mr. Ravelletta tonight, and we say this, we've been fighting like heck for a November 3rd referendum on mayor versus manager. We ask you guys, if possible, if Attorney Jessel hines that we can't do it, then before you have to set up the ballot for the election, have a referendum like we did 36 years ago in the middle of the summer, say, July 15th. We would also practice social distancing voting. It'd be a great way to practice voting for November 3rd for real, and we could get the people's pulse the best we can on manager versus mayor. And then at that point, after you count that, you could say one of two things. If the mayor's side prevails, you can say, you know, this is a substantial number, you know, it's 2,000, 1,000 for mayor. Let's not put anything on the ballot November 3rd. Let's just let the election happen, and we'll study, Mr. Kane's commission could go back to work again, and we can study this more, more in depth. If, however, like we lost 36 years ago when I was the pro-mayor side, we lose, you guys still have time to set up the August 11th ballot, I think Mr. Wynn told me that was the deadline, and you could still go forward with Mr. Kane's majority report and vote it that way on November 3rd. We're hoping we can just have the referendum on November 3rd, but we're offering a compromise of a special referendum, so we get the best input we can. This, as Mr. DeSmeris said, will not open again for 10 years. I'm 69 years old, I'll be almost 80. I've dreamed since my brother Billy and Jack, he was one heck of a first chief executive in the town of Woodbury, just go there now and ask people. My brother Billy dreamed to be Watertown's first mayor. I didn't, but I wish the heck he got the chance. When he got elected as chief executive of Woodbury, he looked at me and said, I love the people who give me this chance, Sean, I wish I could have done this in Watertown. There's not just one Billy Butterley. If we put this out and we get a mayor, you're going to see the Louis Razas, you're going to see the Brian Flarities, you're going to see the Rob Kanes, and if necessary, if my party nominated me, would I run for that? I'll be honest to tell you, absolutely, absolutely. Anybody should be proud, a young kid in this town, dream of being the mayor of their hometown, to get a paycheck for that job and be accountable to the people for the job they do. That's basic civics. And the only place in the North Duck Valley, ladies and gentlemen, where that's not a right, the only place, is my hometown, the town that I grew up on, a little coffee shop on Main Street, and wanted to do whatever I could for my hometown, but my brother Billy was my hero, and he led the way. And ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of Billy Butterleys around here, and you'll see them all come out as candidates, and when they do, we'll have a choice. And if Louis Razza runs against Brian Flarity, at the end of that, we'll shake hands and we'll have a heck of a mayor and a loyal opposition to say, let's, hey, what did you do, and I'm going to run the next time? That's democracy, that's New England, that's what my brother Billy faced over in Woodbury. Three times the voters put him in, he died on the job, and he died doing what he loved. It'd be an honor to do what he did, and I'm so proud of him. And I just want to point out to you, ladies and gentlemen, that this is an awesome, talented town, and we have the intratown thing. Finally, I'm betting of the 18 candidates for town council, the one you select is going to be a Watertown resident. So we kind of have a mayor now, just not elected. A few people on the town council put in the mayor, the manager, but really, you can substitute the word mayor, they're just not elected by all the people. We haven't had an out-of-town town manager for real since 20 years ago when I was council chairman, and Charlie from Massachusetts was the manager. For most part, you know, Mr. Oscar Scadal had deep roots in our town. So we have kind of been appointing local people. You just haven't had all the people vote on it, and with competition breeds competency. So if Louis Razza runs against Flarity or whomever, you're going to have both sides saying, here's what I'm going to do, and the other side will be watching as the loyal opposition, not as naysayers. I'm not against town hall, because it's where town hall is. I pointed out the steps, just to say, when Rob said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. We're not perfect. We needed that town hall 60 years ago. A person was hit walking across the street in 1997 or '8, one of our town workers, and it took us 21 more years to get out of that building, which was too dangerous, the day Alan Mulia took the first town manager job in 1961. That building was out of date then, it was built in 1894. Ladies and gentlemen, please give us that November 3rd referendum. If not, take the compromise, Chairman Wynn, and let's say, let's have a quick special referendum like we had, Mary Ann remembers it in the summer of 1984. And then you'll get the pulse of the people, the best pulse we can take. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your job, thank you for making this possible. God bless the whole town, I wish we could all be together at Watertown High and having these hearings live, and I hope we soon are safe to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butterley. Is anyone else, it looks like? Who? Paul Vance, Mr. Vance, your mic is open?
It is, thank you. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I just wanted to point out briefly for you that general statutes at 7-193 for you that general statutes, it's seven dash 193. It's organization of government and it requires under that section that the municipality has a legislative body, which we have, and it should have a chief executive officer. And it gives various types of chief executive officers. First electman, a CEO, a mayor, a warden, a city or town manager, a chief administrative officer appointed by the mayor. I, I don't think we spent enough time looking at the various options that are available to us. And I'm afraid that if we wait another 10 years, we'll lose this opportunity. The, the committee, the Charter Revision Committee did a good job. We have a bunch of very committed people. I'm not casting any aspersions against the report or the decisions that were made. I simply think we need to spend more time looking at the form of government because that's probably the most important issue that you tasked us to look at. I, I would like this to be on the ballot. Obviously, I leave it in your capable hands to decide whether or not that makes sense. I know that we have time by statute. Uh, I'm happy to help in any way I can, either as a member of the committee or as an attorney. I know that there's a very, very competent attorney on this, uh, on this town council as well, that I'm sure could pitch in and help, uh, Paul Jessel if he needs it. I would just like this to go to the voters so that we don't have to wait another 10 years if a change is going to be made. I like what, uh, Mr. Butterley threw out as a possible compromise, but I, but I'd like us to get there. And if it requires another special meeting, if it requires, uh, a few more meetings of the Charter Revision Commission, uh, I stand willing and able. I, I thank you for listening and if anyone wants to contact me, I'm always available to talk about, uh, the statute and how it applies to us. Again, I'll just leave you with it. Seven dash 193, in case anyone wanted to Google it and read it for themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Um, Rob Kane, Chairman Kane. Can you want to say something?
Hello?
Okay. Rob?
Just a second.
Rob? Uh, he's still...
Yeah, I have to leave him.
Okay, hold on. Hold on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
I hate to sound like that, uh, commercial. One of the towns, uh, we looked at during this process was the town of Hamden. Uh, if, hate to pick on one particular town, but this was one of the research, uh, things we looked at. And if you read anything in the news currently about the town of Hamden, uh, unfortunately they're, they're underwater with their budget and, uh, with their, uh, general fund. As you know, here in Watertown, uh, we have a pretty robust general fund. Uh, we have a low, uh, mill rate. We have a good educational system. Uh, we have good property values. We have an excellent police force, a wonderful volunteer fire department. We have good parks, uh, and recreation. Uh, we just have a good quality of life. And so one of the things we looked at was the town of Hamden. So I just want to address the, the question of, of the work we did and how we looked at the 169 municipalities, uh, that share the state of Connecticut and the form of government that each of them choose. And just let me read, uh, a little bit of, of what we looked at with Hamden. 29 towns in Connecticut currently have a town manager and council. Of those 29, only West Hartford has a larger population than Hamden. Meriden is the next largest town with a town manager with about 59,000. So 20 of those 29 towns have a population under 30,000 and that's where Watertown is. 22, I believe. Most of the towns in Connecticut that have town managers appear to be in better financial shape than Hamden. Property values in Hamden appear to be lower overall than those in most towns with town managers. Having a town manager, they said, allows for continuity during political transitions, helps foster ethics, helps diffuse special interests and helps to eliminate partisan politics when administrative decisions are being made. According to ICMA, the International City County Management Association, most managers are professionals with a master's degree in public administration, business or public policy, with an average of 20 years' experience in local man, government management. Town manager can make the hard decisions that are best for the town because he or she would not have to worry about getting reelected. They're not worried about elections. They're worried about the taxpayer and worried about the town. Having someone in charge in a professional, unelected capacity who has studied town government and who has extensive experience in managing it could help Hamden solve its financial woes. A town manager, they added, would allow the town to have a budget that is going to fund the town every single year rather than keeping taxes low in an election year and then raising taxes in non-election years. So this was one of the case studies we looked at was the town of Hamden and certainly people are welcome to Google their financial woes. We don't have that here in Watertown. We have an amazing community, uh, led by a wonderful town council, a professional town manager, a great board of education. As I said, a wonderful police and fire, park and rec. We just do things right and the way we honor our veterans i- is like no other in our communities. So we looked at all these things and, and I, I just, you know, just want to address that because i- it's been stated that, you know, maybe more time is needed. I believe we spent the time, we took the time, we, all of us were dedicated individuals who gave up summer months, we gave up nights with our families, we gave up opportunities to golf or be with our kids or whatever. Uh, we put in that kind of time and I believe we, we, we have a report, uh, that is ready to move forward. So, uh, again, it's up to you as the town council. I know you have, uh, to respond to our report eventually and let us know whether, um, you're going to accept or reject our changes, but, but I believe in this report and I believe in my commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kane. What else?
Just remind people to raise their hand.
Okay. Raise your hands on your, uh, on your website if you want to speak.
Raise them high.
See a hand? I think that's Rich... Oh, is that Zaga?
Yes, it is.
Zaga. Okay, Zaga, you're on.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know if it's possible to get a, an opinion without having an attorney here. I was hoping that attorney might be present. Um, is it necessary to wait 10 years before you might make, uh, a change in, in terms of having another referendum? I don't believe it is. I don't believe you have to wait 10 years to have a Charter Revision Commission pulled together. I think you have to do it within a 10-year period. I don't believe that it has to be 10 years. I think you could do a Charter Revision on a specific issue much earlier than that if in fact we did get the 900 signatures and somebody wanted to force a referendum type question. I think it could be dealt with not 10 years from now, but maybe one or two years from now. Uh, I think Mrs. Albino spoke very eloquently about the need for change and the kinds of time that we're living in right now. And I couldn't agree with her more, but our conclusion as to whether this is the time to change the form of government differs somewhat. Changing the form of government to me is not a simple process. It's a massive, complicated effort and undertaking. It, you cannot simply just switch your light switch on and off and say, okay, we're changing the nameplate on this door and we now have a mayor form of government as opposed to a manager form of government. As in a time of extreme chaos, in a time of extreme instability, in a time of extreme unrest, we have massive unemployment, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we have businesses in our town, our very small town that are going out of business, that are going to have a hard time restarting. We have families that have people that have passed away in nursing homes that they have not been able to say goodbye to. They could not have funerals. They are still suffering. We cannot have meetings where we can talk face to face and actually debate something logically and clearly. To me, to actually undertake a change of government at this time and this place is very, very unwise. And I think not only is it unwise and foolish, but I think it would be absolutely disastrous in a time of chaos, when you're literally flowing down towards that waterfall, you don't suddenly change captains or jump ship or try to do something differently. That being said, when the vote came up, uh, at our Charter Revision Commission on whether to put this on the ballot or not, I voted with a majority not to put it on the ballot. But before I did that, I asked the maker of the, um, motion to please clarify exactly what it was that was involved. And basically what it was, was a motion to hold a referendum, uh, on the November ballot, which would be a binding referendum and in the process also shell the charter, uh, put it on the back burner and not submit it to the town council. As Rob said, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this. There are changes that were necessary. We made corrections and made changes that the previous Charter Revision Commission had omitted or overlooked or didn't quite get to. Uh, there are changes that every department head that came before us wanted to make. Uh, it was for the betterment of their running their departments. Uh, to put all of that on a back burner at this time, I think really does a big disservice to all the work that was done to the department heads that came before us, were expecting change. It is a good document. It's a massive document. I don't know whether legally you can just go ahead and put it on a back burner until X amount of time. There are deadlines that are set and stayed. That being said, I truly, with all my heart and soul, believe that the people do have to be listened to. This isn't, any municipality, any town really belongs to the people and it's that you do need a voice. Had Mr. Damaris changed his motion to a non-binding advisory referendum, I would have voted for it. Because it's important to see where a town of 22,000 people, we have 14,000 voters, 173 signatures, as difficult as, God bless you, as difficult as it might have been to get, uh, is only a very small fraction of the town. I think it is important to see what is the feeling of those 14,000 voters or those 22,000 voters. If there is an overwhelming, I mean, if you were doing it as a non-binding advisory question, great. I think that's the way it should be. Uh, and if there is overwhelming support for that, then you can wait one or two years. It's certainly not going to make a difference. It's a complicated process. It takes a long time. It affects, a change in government affects every single department in the city, every single employee in the city, every function of our government. If you look at the charter now and you see the responsibilities of the town manager to change that to a mayor-elected form of government where that would change every two years, you have to do massive changes throughout the charter. You have to do massive changes in the way you operate just by virtue of the appointments that the town manager makes that would then, with that call for mayor to make those appointments every two years, could you change that? The chaos would be, you know, significant. So it has to really, you have to take a lot of time to really plan that out, do it right if you're going to do it. By all means, if you can get a non-binding referendum and see just how much support there is for that, you can also wait until we are on more stable footing, until the pandemic is over, until there is maybe a vaccine or, or whatever works, until our economy is on a better standing, until our people have employment again and we can actually meet and socialize. I'm heartbroken. I've got 12 grand, 10 grandchildren, 12 grandchildren. I'm losing count, Jonathan, but that I have not been able to see for four months. I have not been able to hug for four months. We have had celebrations. We have had illness. We have had deaths. And it's, everybody in this town is undergoing the same thing. Now is not the time that you want to throw it into greater chaos. If I have a recommendation, then it's not my recommendation to make. It's up to the counselors. I would say, try to do an advisory opinion if you can do that legally. Get the voice of the people, listen to them, see what they say, and then act in a logical, appropriate, professional manner. You, you cannot do something like this at the drop of a hat. Like I said, you cannot flip a switch and change forms of government. So I, I, I do support listening to the people if there's a way you can do that. I also support caution in doing it right so that you don't make more mistakes. This is not the time to do that. I sincerely believe this is not the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Ravelletta.
Mr. Richard Ravelletta?
You lowered your hand. Hit it. No.
Rich Ravelletta.
Well, good after, good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Ravelletta, 87 Concorde Drive, Watertown. Uh, I am a co-sponsor along with Sean Butterley. I try to keep it a little bit shorter than Sean. Uh, we would like to have a mayoral referendum be placed on the presidential ballot Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. I know the restrictions that you just brought up with Mr. Jessel, uh, and he's looking at other mayors and, I mean, other lawyers and whatever throughout the state. Uh, has he contacted these mayors, Secretary of State? Would she have the answers?
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry I disrupted, uh, just, I interrupted you. I'll wait for you to finish, then I'll answer.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the presidential, the, the mayor referendum, uh, if we have it on November 3rd, 2020, this will give the town voters a choice from coun- council manager to elected mayor, council government. And the word is, the word I'd like to use, the important word is vote. And you gentlemen and ladies have all been voted into your position. And vote is a very important word to me. It's an expression of choice or preference by ballot or some other method of suffrage, decisions by majority, the right to express political preference. That's the simple reason to give the water oak voters a chance to pick their form of government management or mayor. The totals at the end will decide whether the vote would be, what would be preferred. If they vote for management to keep it in place, then we go with management. If they vote for mayor, then we would have to decide to go and we have time to adjust ourselves to get into a mayor form of government. But the most important thing is they would have a choice to vote. And that, that is my main reason. Uh, and in the past, in the, we've had some management persons, Mr. Kane, I know you brought up, uh, some good, some great points about our, our town and, and I believe in that also. But we've also had some clunker managers that we hired with their education or whatever that really didn't do Watertown a damn good. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelletta. I'd just like to answer the question that you had, uh, about the secretary of state. I don't know if you were here when we started the meeting, but, uh, Lisa Dalton, our town clerk, had contacted the state, uh, the secretary of state and she gave us, or her, two statutes to be renewed by our attorney and, uh, asking, um, them to give us a legal opinion. So we did contact her and that's, that's the, that was the, uh, that's what the result was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope to answer your question. Anybody else?
Rosa Bolesky.
Rosa?
Rosa Bolesky.
Rosa Bolesky is, uh, mic is open?
Yes, thank you. Rosa Bolesky, 456 Davis Street. Um, I just want to, um, follow up with Zaga's comments, um, just not to be afraid and not to be too concerned. Yes, there would be a lot of change if we did change over to mayor. Um, but give us a chance to vote on it. That's all we ask. Um, I mean, I don't think I know of any town that's gone from a mayor to a town manager situation. I mean, eventually towns make choices of what they want and we get through it. We get through the changes and we, we do have rules in place. We do have departments in place and everything's not going to be tossed up in the air if such a change should be placed. Of course, it would take time. We, we have some guidance and would do the steps that were, would be needed. So just give us the chance to vote on it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If I could open up the call mic in case someone can't raise their hand, I could just offer it. Because I'm afraid this will come from people that can't. So if I open up the mic...
Zaga wants to say please.
Rosa Zaga?
Just a quick answer to Rose. Um, I'm in a town that did exactly that. We had a long-term mayor, um, and we went to a town manager and that was the town of Meriden. Thank you.
Okay. Do anybody else? Okay.
So I think, let me just check one more line.
Go ahead. Lisa's checking again.
Rose spoke, we had Mr. Avellotta spoke. I have Catherine Camara still open, she's, I don't know if she's raised her hand again, but I think it appears that she's...
Is there anybody that...some mics are open, some aren't, I'll just get an opportunity for mics that are open to say something before I have my statement. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, it's Jeff Maris. Just real quickly, you know, I appreciate what Zaga said, and I understand we're talking about having it as a non-binding agreement, and frankly, that's would be fine, of course, but I think the issue that I have is that from the very beginning of our, our time as a commission, from the very first meeting, the initial discussion, one of the initial discussions was looking into the change of form of government. And for, at least for me, and I know for a few of my colleagues on the commission, that was a very crucial point, and it's something I think that did deserve more than a quick mention under a single agenda item that was maybe quocite-related at best in a February meeting. It's something that we should have known we were going to discuss, therefore, there had been research that could have been done beyond just the chair bringing some information. It's something that we could have had a more open discussion, the public could have been informed that that would have been a specific topic, and it would also prepare us for a point where we could have put together a framework of what a mayoral form would look like in our town and what a transition from the current form to that would look like. But to echo what Zaga said, you know, a referendum, whether binding or whether it's an advisory referendum, I think is crucial for us to be able to get the pulse of the people, to know what they feel, to know what they would want to do. But I think that even in an advisory scenario, if the referendum turns out that they prefer to change, then we'd have to adhere to kind of what they want to do. The timetable doesn't have to be immediate, it could be a timetable, we can take our, take a certain period of time to be able to make that change. But I feel, and this is, again, this is my opinion, I feel that we could have taken more time in the commission to discuss this specific topic, more than one part, a few minutes of one meeting, but rather taken a meeting or two at least to discuss the framework here, to discuss what the impact should be of the change on our town specifically. And keep in mind, there are towns, you know, Chairman Kane pointed out Hampden, but if you look at Prospect, Prospect has had a mayor reform of government for as long as anyone can remember, they've had the same mayor since 1978, and they are doing quite well there. So it is, you can always kind of look at results from different towns, and each town has its own unique story. The question that would be on the ballot is whether or not a town manager or a mayor would be the right fit for Watertown, and that should be up to the people to decide. And that's all to say. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Butterley. Raise your hand.
Okay, go ahead, Sean, and then Chairman Kane after Sean. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you so much. Couple of things, Zaga, I just want to say to you that, you know, when you mention the city of Meriden, it's really a city. One great thing that we have is that we're a small town still. We have 20,000 people, and when Rob mentioned Hampden, I taught in Hampden for 20 years, I just retired. I once, one semester, give you an example of the difference in towns with 60,000 people in a small city, they all, the problems that happen in a city, including violence, sometimes gang violence. In one semester I taught law, one kid was shot and lived, his brother was shot and died. And I've gone to wakes for my students, it's, they have a lot of city problems because of figures endemic to a city that we don't have in a small town. So I think Jeff's right, we have to look more like Wiltke, Prospect, Noggi, those are a couple towns, and there's no reason we couldn't do selectmen, but I think you probably would look at a mayoral election, if you put it in place, till 2023. I don't think it'd happen for next, for next election, but we'd have a lot of time to study it, and there's not any reason we can't go back to look also at first selectmen if they go that way, but right now we say mayor. So my thoughts are, we want an elected chief executive, we're not looking to rush this in 10 minutes, we want to take the pulse of the people, and you spoke to that, Zaga, very eloquently. So that's really what we're looking, to take the pulse and then reflect and take the time to do it right. That's what we're looking for tonight, we're not looking for a quick fix and that we're going to vote for mayor, and then the next five months later, we have a mayor. Not at all. The attorney general bonus on the commission, he's a very bright man, he knows these things take time, you have to study it, there's a lot of people that can and would. So thank you so much for all your attention tonight, but I just don't think it's fair to compare our town to Meriden and to Hampden, which are just three pons or socks.
Thank you, Sean. Chairman Kane, go ahead.
Hold on. I'm sorry. I think he's doing himself.
Okay, can you hear me? I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to enter into a debate, but I do need to push back on Jeff's assertion that it was only one agenda item at one meeting. If you read the agendas from the very beginning, from June all the way through, there is a general discussion available item on each and every agenda that allows discussion on any topic, including the form of government. So that particular issue was open and available at each and every meeting throughout our process. So I just, I apologize, I'm not looking to enter a debate, I know this is a public hearing, but I just need to push back on that because it's not a true assertion. Thank you.
I have a question, Ms. Camara.
Anybody else? No.
Catherine Camara.
Oh, Ms. Camara, your mic is open.
Yes, okay, thank you. Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. There was a miscommunication or some confusion back when I spoke the first time, so just for Mr. Donahue's clarification, I was not saying he made that comment at the February 11th meeting, but if you go back to, it was the last meeting of the, it was, I guess, was the hearing that, the last meeting that was held by the actual Charter Revision Commission, and that particular meeting is not available for the filming. I don't know if the auditor is available, and I don't know if the minutes are available, but that was the meeting where it was said, so I just wanted to clarify that. I also just wanted to say that there was, you know, I understand what Mr. Kane was saying about all the meetings that you had, and now what you're saying is, I guess it was open at any time to discuss this, but it wasn't. I would have thought that it...I just want to say that the February 11th meeting was the only meeting that this was discussed, and I think anybody could read those minutes, and you will see what was discussed in that meeting, and it was, it was nowhere near the length of the discussion that's being had tonight. So just saying, you know, when you say that it was thoroughly discussed, you can look at those minutes and you can make your own opinion, everybody can make their own opinion whether or not it was really thoroughly discussed. And as far as comparing, I don't live in Hampden, so comparing this to Hampden, but of course, anybody can come up with a town, either that has a town manager that works well, or that has a mayor that works well, or it doesn't work well. That, to me, is not the point here. The point is to allow the people to have the opportunity to have, to vote and make their decision. It's not a matter of what town does what. People can, can look that up themselves. If this is allowed, I'm sure there'll be plenty of letters and plenty of discussions about what's good and what's bad, and that's fine, that's the process. But to decide not to put it on the ballot because Hampden, you know, works one way, or Noggettuck works one way, that's, that's just not the issue. The issue is whether or not the people are going to be given the opportunity to vote on going forward what type of government our town will have. I think that's really what the point is. Thank you.
Anybody else? Before I make my comment? Okay. Zaga, please make it short. Go ahead.
Can't hear her.
Yeah. Wait a minute, hold on, hold on.
Okay, just...
Go ahead, you're on.
Okay, just to respond to Mr. Butterley, of the 29 towns in Connecticut that currently have a town manager form of government, 20 of them have less than 30,000 residents.
Okay. Okay. We've, I think we've had a lot of discussion tonight, a lot of back and forth, and I think it's been a good discussion, I think it's been positive. One question I'd like to answer about having a referendum in July, which is four weeks away, the reason why we have to have our questions on August 17, it gives 12 weeks for Lisa Dalton, our town clerk, to put this together with an attorney for the questions, it goes to the Secretary of State, it is authorized by then and confirmed by then, it comes back to us, it has to be advertised, it takes, no, $8,000, I'm just putting that out, I don't think that should be even a question if this is so important. But to do a referendum in three to four weeks is not even unreasonable, it's absolutely impossible. So, number one. Number two, we've had all this discussion, and I want to make, I want to reiterate what I said, this council is going to be aggressive in finding out what exactly we can do. If we can, if we can get it on the ballot in November, we will, we will speak to that issue. If we can't, it won't happen. Zaga had a question about whether we can do it before the 10 years. We don't need to answer that question tonight, we can get that question answered in the near future. But I think that, I think the people and the voters need to know that this council has heard them, we're going to, we're going to do it the right way, we're not going to embarrass the town by doing it the wrong way, and when we get that answer from our attorney, we will, again, speak as a group and with the, with the commission, and we will make that decision depending on what we are allowed to do legally. Now, I'm going to open up any kind of statements that the council would like to say, any council members. Don't be shy. Anybody? So I am now going to adjourn this meeting, thank you for everybody and all your participation, and we will, I'm sure, meet again. Thank you. We done?